We have, we were asked to have Joe Crea from Raff Tellus, who did the study for us for the sewer rates. His company did, we've met with Joe and we've asked him to come here this evening and kind of give us an outline of what the rates, what the rates are, the impact that we're looking at a 10% reduction for a few months here for the city of Tiffin sewer users. And we asked, we asked Joe if he could kind of give us an overview of the impact that that might have in what kind of a position we're in financially and and any other questions that you might have. So is that summarize it okay Dale?
I think that's, that's wonderful. And I think Joe is ready to walk through a little about his company. And then the analysis he's done to date as to what a decrease in sewer rates, temporary decrease, would, the impact it might have long-term. So Joe, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay, great. Thanks. And thanks for allowing me to be a part of your meeting this evening. It's amazing, you know, we're doing more and more of these virtual get-togethers with clients and to see sort of the way that every utility has embraced it is pretty exciting. So happy to be here with you guys tonight. You know, as Dale mentioned real quick, just very briefly, a little bit about who Raff Tellus is, who I am. We've been a company for 27 years now. And throughout the, probably the first 20 years of that history, our company, the only thing we did was financial planning, some cost of service and rates studies for municipal utilities all across the country. We're started and we're headquartered out of Charlotte, North Carolina. We were started by George Raff Tellus, which is where the name comes from. More recent years, we've started to diversify and gotten a little bit more into working with general governments, working with stormwater utilities. But everything we do is all municipality kind of focused. In any given year, our firm, we've got about 125 employees. We do, you know, several hundred financial planning and rate studies for water sewer stormwater enterprises across the country. I've been with Raff Tellus for over 13 years now and was in our Charlotte office for the first six years of my career. And now kind of run our Cincinnati office. I'm a native of Ohio and kind of moved back for family reasons, but was lucky enough to be able to kind of continue working with Raff Tellus. So we were, you know, the type of work we're going to talk about tonight, this is kind of exactly what we do. If you can believe it, we love doing this kind of stuff. So we're happy to talk about, you know, what's going on with sewer enterprise. And of course, any questions, thoughts and comments, we'll be able to work through them. I believe Dale mentioned that kind of the one-page memo and the sort of single cash flow, y'all had seen that before. So I'll use a little bit of that as my guide. And before we get into that, just want to give you a little bit of perspective. So, you know, the pandemic has affected utilities across the industry pretty dramatically. But in different ways, depending on kind of the demographics of the community, there are a number of our clients who are kind of really large, dense urban, you know, cities, the city of Baltimore, city of Philadelphia, Akron, who are seeing barely significant reduction in water sales, which also translates into lost sewer revenue for many of them because of the shutdowns of businesses. You know, even with folks staying at home and using more water on the residential connections, it doesn't account for the volumes of water that businesses are seeing. So that, you know, obviously the, I think every utility is, at this point, is pretty much put a moratorium on turnoffs and penalties for customers. So that has some pretty significant impacts to utilities, cash flows and revenue streams as well. But, you know, generally what we've seen over the past four or five months, now that we're starting to get some data in, is that, you know, anywhere from about a five or 10% reduction in sort of volume water sales, all the way up to kind of 15 to 20% for some of those utilities, clients of ours that are kind of more dependent on a non-residential user base. Just to give you a little perspective as we kind of go in and talk more specifically about what's happening there in Tiffin. You know, we've been working for the past couple of months kind of on developing the financial plan in anticipation of building out the rate study. We still anticipate to kind of have those results in over the next six or eight weeks. Just kind of working to get some information with Dale and his team to allow us to kind of calculate those, those new rates that will support your plan. But that doesn't prevent us from being able to kind of look at the historical performance of the sewer enterprise fund and make some projections for where it would go in the future based on what we know today. So a few important things, you know, sewer enterprise fund, obviously being an enterprise fund, it has to be sort of self-sufficient. So the rates and charges generated by that enterprise need to support the operation, the capital investment, all of the financial policies of that enterprise fund. When the city kind of knew that they were going to be making these very significant capital investments as a part of the long-term control plan, the ordinance was put in place that provided for the annual increases in the sewer service charges. And that sort of allowed the rates to incrementally get a little bit higher and higher in anticipation of spending, you know, what was at the time maybe thought to be a $75 or $80 million number. Now I think the, the control plan is $82 million, but that's in 2015 kind of value. So when you escalate that to the current and future dollars, that's over $100 million of investments that's going to be needed. So a very significant investment being made over the next 20 years. And so having those rate increases in place was a very prudent move. And it's put you all in a, in a strong financial position to be able to start this program and execute it as outlined in the documents that now are, you know, you're sort of required to as part of your agreement. So, you know, when we look at the last three or four years of historical financial data, we get a sense of how much revenue can we expect under normal conditions. And that allows us to make some projections and estimates, estimate that revenue going forward. Again, given the, the annual increases that were part of that ordinance that is in place right now. And we're talking about changing it a little bit, but that gives us a baseline for our revenue. And then we look on, on sort of the expense side, where are we spending our money? We obviously know we have to, to pay staff, we have to pay for materials and supplies. We have to pay for just, you know, chemicals, electricity, power pumping. All of that kind of gets factored in as a, as a cost. And then after that, we have to pay back the loans that we have borrowed to invest in the system historically. And we also have expectations for future loans, future borrowing that will support the capital plan going forward. And all of that is kind of built into that cash flow, the spreadsheet that you were provided as well. And at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is make sure that we have enough revenues to support all those expenses, while at the same time, you know, not bleeding any reserves or cash from the enterprise fund so that we're balanced and we still maintain a healthy financial position. You know, the ultimate takeaway, then we maybe open it up for some, some conversation is, you know, based on where you're at right now and the, the great borrowing that you were able to secure for the wastewater treatment plant expansion, which was a no-interest loan. We don't have to start paying it back for three or four years. It gives us a, a bit of flexibility to be able to provide some additional benefits to the customers. In addition to kind of deferring that the penalty is deferring the shut offs right now. But how can we actually help folks save some money during this difficult time? You know, reducing the rate, the sewer service charge by 10% and holding it constant there until I think March 15th is the typical date when those increases was effective. The sewer fund has enough financial strength and foundation from the sort of historical increases to be able to support the future operating needs and capital investments as required per the, the long-term control plan. And also provide some allowances for additional capital reinvestment in the system, you know, outside of the long-term control plan, because there's, there's other pipes in the ground. There's other assets that will continue to age over the next 20 years. And we're going to need to reinvest in the system as a whole. So the, the plan we've kind of laid out, it again supports that 10% reduction, followed by getting back on the 5% increase thereafter. But what we're going to be working with, with staff and ultimately with you to think about over the next couple of months is, can we shape, can we adjust the longer-term increases and make those five, you know, 5% per year in perpetuity? Maybe there's something that, that's a little bit better, maybe more timed when, when we need that money for future capital investments. And potentially we could ease the long-term burden even more. But, you know, again, we're not all the way there to be able to say that just yet. And those are conversations we definitely would intend and plan to have going forward as we move towards completion of the project. I know I rambled for a bit there. So let me know if there's any questions, definitely I'd love to take them. And if, if we'd like to go through anything more specifically, I'd be happy to kind of walk through any of the numbers kind of line by line, if folks want to get into that kind of detail.
Mayor?
Mayor? Yeah, I just want to add, thank you, Joe, for the presentation. That was solid. We really appreciate everything that you and the company has been doing for us, studying these rates. But as you can hear from Joe's report this evening, we are in a position to where we could provide our residents here in Tiffin with a 10% reduction on their sewer rates for the remainder of this year and even into part of next year. And then as Mr. Crea stated, we would then look at a 5% increase next year at the end of March, when things always, when the rates always change. But that would still be a 5% reduction next year from current rates. The administration, after reviewing these figures, certainly agrees with his assessment. And we really would like to see council act on this because we do feel that providing relief to our residents right now, when the economy is still struggling, the unemployment rate is still hovering around 15%. A lot of folks are still working on reduced hours. This, this nice gesture from the city of Tiffin to give people a break on their sewer bills for the next couple of years, really I think shows people that we do listen to them down here and we care about them. Of course, we can't eliminate sewer bills entirely or anything, but the relief that we've given them with waiving late penalties and now with a 10% reduction in their rates, I just think it's the right thing to do to help our residents right now when many people are struggling, especially families in this community.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Crea, for joining us. And I have a few questions here. And I guess I, my ears perked up when I saw your report there. You were saying in 2040, we would need $109 million. And again, I'm not used to working with these kind of figures. But I looked at either Tiffin spreadsheet or yours, Joe, and, and I don't have it in front of me, but I'm going from memory. But it looked like from 2021 to 2028, we were taking in 6 million and we're spending 4 million. So for eight years, it looked like we were going to take in, let's say, 16, 17 million dollars. Then if I read that report correctly, year 2029 and year 2030, we were taking in 6 million, but we were spending much more than that. And it looked like we were going to be in a negative situation in 2029 and 2030. And I believe the report ended right there. So I was curious what 2030 through 2040 looks like if we're going to be in a deficit situation. It alarms me. So maybe you could explain that.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's, that's a great question, a good observation. Certainly kind of getting you, getting you all through a 10-year period where, you know, it's a downward trajectory and things look good. As long as you don't go out an extra two years would, would not be a feasible or sustainable plan. So a couple of things to point out and apologies that, you know, the, the single page that we provided does not have all of the information for you to be able to determine what was happening. So behind the scenes, there's a couple of things regarding the capital investments, the $109 million sort of needed over the next 20 years. So again, that's spread over a 20-year period and it kind of comes in batches as some of the significant components of the long-term control plan are kind of made. So there's the, the plan expansion going on right now. After that, I believe there's a, a big project for, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the data on another screen. I think it's an $18 million equalization basin project. And then there's sort of phase one system improvements, which I think somewhat depends on how successful the first two are. But it's going to be expanding the collection system and doing other things needed to make sure we're controlling the overflow. So it's all phased out over 20 years. And the important thing is that, that will be financed. We're going to pay for those projects with a combination of both, you know, cash money that we receive any year and just sort of put in the bank and save it, along with additional borrowing from most likely state sources. So the state revolving fund loan typically provides very strong terms. And, you know, for example, the, the no-interest loan that you've got right now for the plan expansion is a perfect example of kind of the benefit and the strength of, of that program. It, there's no reason to think that that money would go anywhere. And so we plan to, to borrow additional monies to help support some of those big projects. And we would finance some of the smaller, more routine annual maintenance, annual rehab and repair work with the, the cash that we kind of have on hand. So the 109, when you kind of have to translate it into what our annual requirements are going to be. And so this model, it does look well beyond 2030. It actually goes all the way out to 2055 is kind of the length of time that I've got it projected for right now. It can go longer, but it's just going to get hazier and hazier. So it is in there, but it does roll in the principal and interest repayment on any loan that we're going to borrow. So we haven't assumed that we're going to be able to get no interest in principal forgiveness for anything in the future. We're not, we've got a fairly conservative assumption in our future borrowings. We've only assumed the no-interest for the one we already secured. So that's layered in there, which, which kind of does a couple of things. It, it allows us to spread those costs over a greater period of time and also helps kind of promote the intergenerational equity of, of the system. So if we were to pay everything with cash, the current customers right now would pay the whole bill. But when we borrow it over a 20 or 30-year life period, you know, basically a mortgage, that, that generally aligns with the life cycle of that asset. And so folks who use that asset over any point in the 30 years are going to be paying a share of that cost. So it, it makes a lot of sense from, from that perspective as well. And, and when you look at the bottom of the cash flow, that sort of net revenue surplus and deficit, that's looking at kind of all the revenue coming in and then the revenue going out. And as you mentioned, we're, you're kind of building up some funds early and then it does go negative for a few years there. And all that really means is that we're using some of our savings, some of our cash in the bank to finance really that bottom section, the cash-financed capital and capital outlay. So we're, we're paying for some of those repairs with, with money that was in the bank and not money that we received from customers in that given year. And it, it really kind of just flips for those two years when I extend my model, starting in 2031 and every year thereafter, we do show a positive cash flow. Again, based on the assumption that the kind of the 5% would continue into the future. And that's again, something we'll, we'll be working to refine, but that is just a little bit of a blip for those two years.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Crea. Very good explanation. I think just one other thing. And again, you've looked at this for the next 20 years. And again, I wasn't part of that, but six, eight years ago, someone picked a 5% increase year after year after year. And I thought that 5% increase for 30 or 40 years would be enough to come up with this $109 million. And I'm sure you've looked at that. But I guess my real other concern is if we're increasing mine here at home and everyone else's 5%, 5% for the next 20 years, I just don't want to see your model come back and say, oh, you're going to have to raise it 6%, 10 years from now. You're going to have to raise it up to 8% 15 years from now. So that's my only other major concern.
And that's a, that's a, a great concern to have. I mean, you know, that, it is important, you know, often when we're doing this, it's sometimes hard to provide the, to get the long-term perspective. And that is, that's very important, especially when you're dealing with, you know, assets that have a 30, a 40 or 50, sometimes, you know, 100-year lifecycle, a lot of the mains that are running in the ground, they, they might be in service for 100 years. That's not a preposterous number. So it's important to think kind of big term and long-term. But the 5% is definitely enough to sort of support the long-term control plan needs and sort of the other needs that are kind of known right now. You know, with the big caveat that there's no telling what regulation the EPA might put out in 15 years that requires something different. However, with, with everything we can see at the moment in terms of what the required capital projects are and a responsible amount of money for recapitalizing the other assets in the system, the 5% is sufficient to support that. And we, we will sort of refine that and also kind of look for opportunities to potentially improve upon those numbers as we work through the remainder of our study.
Anyone else? Councilman Leopard?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I believe our 5% increase has started nearly 14 years ago and not seven or eight.
Mayor?
Yes, Steve's correct. It was, I'm going to say 2007, eight or nine is when those increases were put in originally. And again, I agree with what, what Mr. Crea said. We're certainly in a position based off of the data and the numbers that we have available to provide our residents with some relief. And there's no telling what the future holds. But what we do know right now and the facts of the situation are that there are a lot of people and a lot of families and small businesses in Tiffin that are hurting right now. And if we can provide them relief at this very moment, when they need it, when they're hurting most, and we can, have agreed that we can afford to do so, we certainly need to provide them with this relief. Give them a 10% break on their sewer bills until people are able to get back on their feet again. And if this situation happens 30 years from now, a future council can worry about reducing rates at that time or making changes to, to help folks. But right now, we know people are hurting in the community. Small businesses are hurting and we need to do our job to try to provide them with some relief, especially since we know we can afford it now on the sewer revenue side.
Councilman Leopard?
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the first things that Joe expressed, expressed to us that we were in a strong financial position. And I think the rate reduction should be made. We're only, we're only looking at seven and a half months to begin with. And then there's actually going to be another decrease for another 12 months. So we're looking at a total of 19 and a half months.
Joe, is there any, is there any rule of thumb, if I can put it that way, on the number of days cash on hand from municipality?
There's not a, a, you know, rule or policy or goal that is universally applicable. You know, if, if you ask someone from a rating agency, S and P, Moody's or Fitch, they're going to tell you, we want to see at least a year's worth of cash on hand. But the folks that they're generally dealing with are people who are going to the public debt market pretty often to issue bonds. And so they need to have a, a more favorable, more attractive just sort of portfolio to be able to sell those. If you're in a different situation and you don't need to kind of have that marketability, you know, we, we generally would recommend, actually, we generally recommend sort of setting up a couple of funds for most enterprise, water and sewer enterprises. It's, you, you, having an operating reserve is, is great policy. Everyone has something, but it's generally, maybe it's not enough. So we like to say if it's a pure operating reserve, having about 180 days of kind of operating expenses available as cash on hand and working capital. In addition to that, we also like to see a, a capital infrastructure reserve. And, and often that is tied to either kind of a certain multiplier of your annual depreciation or kind of a forward-looking average of what your capital spend is projected to be over the next five or 10 years. And what that does is that gives you some flexibility to finance projects a little differently. If you have to get a loan on, on day one of a project to be able to do it, you, you might get backed into a program that you're not as happy with. But if you have some money and you could potentially time when you do a borrowing or how you finance certain projects, you can optimize your cash flow a bit more. And that gives you a little bit of that flexibility to do that. And also is there in case, you know, a, a big main breaks that you weren't expecting and all of a sudden it costs a million dollars? Sometimes we'll implement what's called a, a rate stabilization fund. Utilities will put these in place and they kind of, you know, they'll almost squirrel money away for a rainy day. And that allows them to smooth their rates. You know, having a predictable 5% a year adjustment like yours is, is nice from the perspective that the public kind of knows it's coming, they're used to it. And it, it generally is something that can be planned for. If you have a rate increase of 9%, 2%, 3%, 12%, that, that's harder for folks to manage. And so rate stabilization fund is, is something that allows utilities to kind of smooth that out and achieve what you already have. So I don't know that that's necessarily something we would, we would recommend for Tiffin. But yes, I don't know if that was probably a lot longer answer than what you were looking for.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, Joe, thank you for joining and providing this information. I think this is really good, high-level overview and feedback and giving us the details on this. And I agree with the mayor. I think that, you know, if we have the opportunity and we're able to afford any sort of assistance to our residents and our businesses during this time, I think we should do so. So this really just reconfirms kind of my stance on moving forward with this.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
One more item and then I'll keep quiet if you believe it. Either past President Hayes or Law Director Howard, in several meetings ago, kept talking about trust the experts, trust the experts. So if Mr. Crea, if you're the expert and you came back and with a recommendation of six months and we're changing it to eight months, and maybe I'm answering my own question based on what you're saying, eight months is not going to hurt us, that extra two months, correct?
No, not at all. You know, so a January 1 or a March 1, you know, getting back on that, that part of this is my fault for not knowing that the prior increase has always occurred in March. So I put January thinking that that was aligned with the historical change, that the extra three months will, will make no difference in the, in the outcome.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Crea? Okay, I don't see any, Joe. So I want to thank you for taking the time to be with us tonight. I, I think you've opened up our understanding of this whole issue and we really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Happy to be here.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, we'll move, we'll move on in the, in the agenda. Any, any motions or any motions? Suspensions? Okay?
A suspension.
Law Director?
Yeah, I believe that we will need to have ordinance 20-78 suspended and voted on for passage this evening. As you may know, reading the, the ordinance, we've already received received this money from the, the county. And so we need to create a fund in which to put the, the CARES Act coronavirus relief funds that the city received. We need to put that into a place in the budget to then transfer it to the appropriate line item and be able to use those funds. So for auditing purposes, the auditors will want to see that we've done this. And this is the very, the quickest we could do it because we just received the fund at the very last day of, of the month of June. So I think unless there's something else, Kathy, you'd like to add, I believe that council should vote on that ordinance this evening.
Nothing to add, Brent. That's exactly right. We got it June 30.
Okay. We're going to be short two members of council tonight. We just need five votes, correct? But you're muted, Brent. You're muted.
Sorry. Yeah, we need six to suspend the three reading rules. So wait, who do we, don't we have, oh, that's right, we don't have Tyler or Dan. No, we cannot suspend the three reading rule this evening.
All right. Well, it's got to get passed, so hang on. All right.
Yeah, the only other item, but if we're not going to have enough council members here, it's a, it's a moot point at this point. But we were requesting passage of ordinance 2076 because that was a donation for $1,500 to the Parks and Rec Department. They were using it to buy the rubberized mulch that goes down underneath our playgrounds. It's safer for the kids. It avoids splinters, and it's more of a cushion when they fall. But if we're not going to have six council members here this evening, I guess that's going to have to wait as well. And it would have been nice, I guess, I don't know if council would have entertained it, but to go ahead with the suspension and passage of the, the ordinance for the sewer rate reduction tonight so that finance had plenty of time to prepare for that. I would hate to see us vote late and expect it to go into effect almost immediately in the August cycle. But if you don't have enough council members, then I guess those ordinances will just have to wait. I think our next meeting is at, what is it, the 20th?
Yes.
Yeah, 20th. So just puts us behind the eight ball. But that was all I had.
We'll take up a few minutes here if I may. Need to schedule a street sidewalk and sewer committee meeting. Dawn and Ken, are you available Thursday at 5:00?
I am sure I am, but let me look at my little gift here I got. And Thursday is, this is coming Thursday, right?
Correct.
Which is, which is wide open. Yep, I'm good.
Do you need?
Don?
All right. Yes, I can do that.
Okay. I'll go ahead and schedule it.
Where, where are we meeting?
129 First Avenue Alley Vacation.
Councilwoman Leopard, do you need me at that meeting? Because I have our regional planning meeting that evening, our executive committee.
No, I, we're, we're good without you.
Okay, because we meet at 5:00 also for that. So as long as you're good with me, I will not need any meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just going to jump in here. Maybe Law Director Howard can help me here. Maybe President Foote's doing, but can't we get one of those on the phone and make?
Okay, we're going to have six members.
All right.
Councilman Perry will be joining us in a few minutes. What did I miss?
The Street Sidewalk and Sewer Committee will hold a meeting this Thursday at 5:00 at 129 First Avenue regarding the petition for vacation of an alley.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor, is there something else you needed to have suspended this evening?
If council's willing to consider it, I would love to see us go ahead and pass, suspend and pass this evening the sewer rate reduction if we're comfortable with that. Because it gives everyone next door time with the, the beginning period set to be in August. If we wait until the 20th to pass, that gives them less than two weeks to have everything ready to go in the sewer departments. So if we're willing to, that'd be great this evening to pass it. And then also ordinance 2076, it was a donation that we received for the Parks and Recreation Department. Tiffin City Schools donated $1,500 for the rubberized mulch to go down underneath a lot of our playgrounds here in the city. Just makes it safer for the kids versus regular wood mulch. It's more of a rubberized surface, and they don't get splinters and whatnot from it. So they'd love to be able to just spend that money and be done with it. So if we could, we could really, I guess, go through the list of them, suspend 2076, 2075, and 2078 would be the requests for this evening.
Okay. Does anyone have any objection to any of those? Okay. Councilman Jones?
And I don't have an objection. I just, based on what Joe Crea explained there, I'm comfortable with the 10% reduction. I just want to make sure we took our time and we looked at the whole entire spectrum of it. So I'm comfortable.
Okay, good. You have some good questions, too. Okay. Anyone else? Anything else? Mayor, Law Director? Go ahead, Law Director.
Yeah, ordinance 20-77, the golf cart ordinance, just for information for City Council, that ordinance, you, if you were around last year and, and you look back at the ordinance that was proposed, it's very similar to last year's ordinance. However, there are two changes that are added based on the discussion at the, the Law and Community Planning Committee. And they are, and I just want to highlight these because otherwise the, the ordinance is essentially the same as, as it was a year ago when it was proposed. But in section 343.02B, we added, I added the phrase that the rear brake and taillights are located at least 36 inches off of the ground. Okay?
Okay.
The second is in 343.03D was added that prohibits a person from riding in a rear-facing seat in a golf cart. So those are two additions that compared to last year's proposed ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. Law Director, could you repeat the other change? I have 343.03D, but I missed the first one.
It's in 343.02B that there is a phrase that this requires that the rear brake and taillights are located at least 36 inches off of the ground.
Thank you very much.
This helps with visibility and safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't see Mayor Montz there, but he mentioned suspending 20-75 and 20-78. But I thought he also mentioned possibility of suspending 20-76 for that rubberized mulch. Was that, is that correct, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
I also want to commend Councilwoman Boyle for the information she put together on the, the golf cart issue. That was simply amazing.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I didn't give you guys hard copies, but I thought it would be kind of a waste. It would have been a lot of paper. So yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate it.
Lot of, lot of information. Good job there. Anyone else? Anything else?
Mr. President, just so that you know, I'm going to give an update in my report regarding the DORA.
Okay.
Since I, I think the public, want to make sure that as many in the public here kind of where we are in the process to get that started.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just so there's no surprises, later on in meeting, again for my benefit and the public's benefit, I was going to ask, I know the fireworks are scheduled for Friday, the 4th or 5th, or, I'm just going to ask, how are we paying for that, or who is paying for that, whether it's donations or some funds are available? And then another constituent on Second Avenue called one to know if the city was planning on letting Mayor Montz declare masks being mandatory in the Tiffin area or not. And I told her off the top of my head, I didn't think Mayor Montz had a doctor's degree to make that determination, but it was just some question she had. And so I'm going to bring that up again for public's benefit. So no surprises.
Right. Thank you. Councilwoman Yanatuno?
Just wanted to tell each of you, if you've changed over your blinders, I turned mine into City Hall when I picked up my packet, because they can use two of them as one for standby copies of our ordinances. Don't touch those original ones. Give them to Dale.
Okay, everybody get that? Okay. Thank you. City Administrator, did you raise your hand? No, okay. All right. If there's nothing else, then I'm going to close the committee's home meeting.
Yes, I'm here. Just got done eating.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, no problem.
All right. You're in charge of the invocation and the pledge tonight, too. Did you know that?
Perfect.
Okay. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just done eating. Months ago, I said to President Foote, what about my supper hour? When are we going to start at 6:45? And he said, I'll have to make other arrangements. But I guess.
That's right. I was on the grill when I got the call, so.
Well, I wasn't here this weekend, but I understand we had quite a few fireworks displays anyway, so. Councilman Jones, quick.
Thank you. Speaking of which, we went over to Clyde's, was it Sunday night? I don't know whatever. Sat right nearby Limerick Park, and the grand finale was probably the second best I've ever seen at Clyde fireworks, other than one time at Cedar Point. They had, Clyde had a very nice display, so I'd like to share that.
All right, 7:00. I'm going to call the July 6, 2020 meeting of Tiffin City Council to order this evening. Councilman Perry will lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Perry?
All right. Y'all pray with me. Our Father, Lord in heaven, hallowed in thy name.
Thy kingdom come.
Thy will be done on earth as is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those trespassers, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
Oh, for, forever.
All right. If y'all will stand and join in at the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with great justice for all.
Justice for all. I am going to ask Hook and Forrest to please call the roll.
Councilman Perry?
Here.
Councilman Chubb?
Here.
Councilwoman Boyle?
Here.
Councilwoman Gillig?
Here.
Councilwoman Yanatuno?
Here.
Councilman Jones?
Present.
Councilman Leopard?
Here.
Let the record show that six members of City Council are present. At this time, I'd like to open up a public hearing by this City Council. The purpose of the hearing is to consider the 2021 tax budget and proposed ordinance 20-17, 20-72, which is an ordinance adopting the tax budget for the fiscal, fiscal year 2021, and directing the Finance Director to deliver the budget to the Seneca County Auditor, honored before July 20, 2020. Anyone wishing to address City Council concerning this matter and direct their questions to, to the President of Council? Kathy, do we have anyone?
If any attendees would like to address the President, please raise your hand. Mr. President, there are no requests.
Okay. Seeing that we have no public comment, anyone from the council have any comments, questions? I declare the hearing closed. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of the June 15 regular council and committee of the home meeting and the June 22 special council meeting? Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions? Without objection, seeing no changes, the minutes will stand, will be approved as presented. Does anyone see a need, excuse me, we'll go to committee reports, Finance Committee. Councilman Gillig?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Law and Community Planning, Councilwoman Boyle?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you stated, most, all of you should have received my official minutes for the Law and Community Planning meeting that took place on June 23. If it's okay, I'd like to give a brief summary of that meeting.
Thank you.
So the purpose, the purpose of the meeting was regard, was to discuss the request to allow golf carts on city streets, which was requested to us by Kevin Hughes. The Law Director had outlined the ordinance that was presented to council last year, ordinance 19-52, regarding the same request. So the restrictions of this ordinance included, sorry, one second, golf carts cannot be driven on streets that have a speed limit greater than 25 miles per hour. The driver had to be at least 16 years of age with a valid driver's license. Any child that required a child restraint was prohibited of being a passenger of the golf cart. The lighting for taillights, headlights, and brake lights required LED bulbs, and the owner or operator required certain liability insurance. Chief Stevens also provided data documenting the use of golf carts on city streets and the inspections required. During the meeting, many council members expressed their safety concerns of this issue. And when this was brought to council last year, the ordinance was defeated due to a lack of majority vote, losing three in favor and two against. So it was decided by the committee in our Law and Community Planning meeting on June 23 to move forward with this issue being brought to full council to be voted on as an ordinance, including the same restrictions as ordinance 19-52 from last year, as well as requiring high mount lamps and no rear-facing passengers. That concludes my report, Mr. President. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Councilwoman Boyle? Materials and equipment. Councilman Jones?
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Personnel and labor relations. Councilman Perry?
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Recreation and public property. Councilwoman Yonatuno?
No report, Mr. President, but just an update. I spoke to Parks Director Bryce Toon, and he stated the situation at the parks around the volleyball. It's gotten better, so plate stays that way.
Thank you. Recre, excuse me. Street sidewalks and sewers. Councilman Leopard?
No report, Mr. President, but I would like to announce a street sidewalk and sewer committee meeting to be held Thursday, July 9, at 5:00 p.m. The meeting will be held at 129 First Avenue, and the purpose of the meeting is to discuss petition number 103, which is an ally vacation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Councilman Leopard?
And any other business that may come before the committee.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Anyone on the Economic Development and Downtown Planning Committee? Anything? Okay. Does anyone see a need for a committee at the whole meeting? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to reports to the officers. Is honor, Cosma Jones?
I just have one tidbit, and I just wanted to work it in. I know we had the meeting at 7 o'clock on ordinance 2072, I believe it was, for that budget. But I thought I saw in writing, maybe it was posted at City Hall, this meeting was going to be at 7:45. So, I thought I'd throw that out for discussion, because some people might think it's happening at 7:45 tonight and not 7:00 p.m. Did I misread that somewhere, or I just thought I? I, what, go ahead.
It was, it was, go ahead. Ann?
I don't have, I don't have it in front of me, but that may have happened because it was posted over last year's. I was using that format, so I may have missed the time. Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Ms. Forrest, for clearing that up. But I guess my point is, some people may think that meeting is going to be yet tonight at 7:45. I would just hate to see us skip over that and hear something about it later on. That's all. I just thought I.
Yeah, I would suggest, if we think that that might have been the case with the public notice, I assume that we will still be in session at 7:45, looking at the agenda tonight. And at that time, I would suggest that we, I know it may be awkward, but we redo the public hearing. Call that open and see if, if there are any comments, just so that we make a record that clearly there was a, an opportunity at the designated time for people to comment regarding the budget.
Okay. We're going to have to hold off on a vote for that then, too. So, okay. Anything else? Unfortunately, officers is honor, Aaron Demonts?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a special occasion over the holiday weekend. One of our businesses here in the Tiffin community celebrated 50 consecutive years of ownership and operation under the leadership of Dick Valentine and his wife Jan, and of course, we all know them at Jack and Doze's here in downtown Tiffin. They had a wonderful event on Friday to thank Dick and Jan for all that they have done for the community, for the business, and keeping things in operation. But it's not very often that you have a business that celebrates 50 consecutive years of ownership by the same individual. It's still in operation today. So, as part of that, we had a proclamation that I am going to read this evening. Little different reading this over the screen versus up in a council meeting room, but nonetheless, it doesn't take away from the accomplishment. It's a mayor's proclamation to the city of Tiffin, Ohio stating, "Whereas 53 years ago, Bloomville native Richard Valentine, a mechanic for a Ford dealership, took a part-time job at the original Jack and Doze on Trenton Avenue in Finley. What started as a part-time job to bring home extra income to support his four children in the midst of a divorce has blossomed into a half-century serving as a cornerstone of our community. And whereas, after two and a half years on Trenton Avenue, having worked his way to manage and operate the pizza shop, Richard hoped to strike out on his own. A conversation with the owner of Finley Jack and Doze led Richard to Tiffin and the pizza shop at 283 South Washington Street. After building a house in Tiffin and working at a breakneck pace at both his job and the Ford dealership, along with countless hours at the pizza shop, Richard signed the deed for ownership of Jack and Doze on July 4, 1970. And whereas, for 43 of the past 50 years, Richard has been joined by his wife Jan, a Wapakana native, who he met while attending Tiffin University. Jack and Doze is a true family affair with the Valentines children, Dick Jr., Tim Berlin, Kim, Adrian, and Amanda, all spending time in the shop. Amazingly, Jack and Doze has had four generations of family in the business. From the single picnic tables and pizza oven in the 1970s, Jack and Doze has done four concession trucks that make many appearances all over the state at county fairs and festivals, while son Tim owns Jack and Doze in Indian Lake, Urbana, and Kenton. Whereas, Jack and Doze has also accumulated a large extended family in the 50 years of continuous operation with untold hundreds of past and present employees, learning valuable insight into quality customer service and being a part of the fabric of Tiffin. Incredible, a number of sons and daughters of past employees have followed their parents' footsteps to work at the shop. Many past employees refer to Dick and Jan as Mr. and Mrs. Doe. And whereas, Richard's tireless work ethic and ingenuity have played a significant role in the success of Jack and Doze. For the past 45 years, Jack and Doze has been home to the first drive-through pickup window in the city, converting a doorway that exited into the alley into a wildly successful business tool. And whereas, in an industry where 60% of new restaurants fail within the first year, and 80% do not survive until their fifth anniversary, we pay tribute today to Richard, Jan, and the entire Valentine family for 50 years of Jack and Doe serving as a gathering place, a popular lunch spot for high school students, and a delicious Friday and Saturday night staple for family dinners for so many in Tiffin and Seneca County. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Aaron Demonts, mayor of the city of Tiffin, Ohio, do hereby declare Saturday, July 4, as Dick and Jan Valentine Jack and Doe's Pizza 50th Year in Business Day in the city of Tiffin, Ohio. This was done under my hand this 4th day of July in the year of our Lord, 2020. So, just a huge thank you to Dick and Jan and the entire Valentine family. I know for four years, while I was at high school at Tiffin Columbian, I think I ate all but probably about a handful of my lunches at Jack and Doze during the week. So, they were just wonderful people. It was great to go in the shop and visit with them and their daughter Adrian, who would put in hours there at the time. Just a wonderful family here in Tiffin. So, a big thank you to Dick and Jan and the entire Valentine family. And I sure hope Jack and Doe's is here for the next 50 years. I know a lot of Tiffanites who returned to Tiffin who have left. That's one of the first things they have to do is stop there and get some of that wonderful Jack and Doe's pizzas. So, congratulations to the Valentine family, and I guess the extended Jack and Doe's family. All right. Some other items to discuss this evening, one of which is the current financial status of the city. We did receive some, somewhat good news. Unemployment dropped from upwards of 22% last month, or in April. The latest report was the May report. We do not have June yet. For, for June, our unemployment has dropped to 14.8% in Seneca County. It still is a significantly high number. It's really pretty unprecedented. We have not seen unemployment rates this high in Tiffin and Seneca County in decades. And because of that, as, as you all know with City Council, the vast majority of revenue that the city of Tiffin brings in is income tax revenue. In fact, nearly all of the revenue that we're able to spend on our general fund is income tax-driven. So, the fact that people are laid off work or are furloughed right now is further hurting the city's budget. As of this morning, which would have been data from last Thursday, since city offices were closed Friday and observance of the holiday, and of course, over the weekend, we are down $822,000 of revenue since April the 1st. So, if you take April 1st through, let's call it yesterday, July 5th, we have, we have had a net negative of $822,000 of revenue, which equates to over 25% of our revenue that we should have brought in during that timeframe. So, we obviously are keeping a very close eye on things with the city. We have made all kinds of budget cuts. Council's aware of many of those items. I do want to give a big shout out and thank you to the Tiffin Police Department. They have been taking voluntary furloughs in that department. We have not forced any city employees to take a furlough. However, we have had several city employees that have done so. The department that has used it the most has been a, has been the, the Police Department. And they have actually been able to save the city and just their department alone approximately $75,000 in furloughs. And the reason for this is when they go out on a furlough, they obviously are entitled to unemployment. They still do receive their health insurance with the city, but then they also were eligible for the extra supplement from the federal government for unemployment. So, many of them volunteered for furloughs, some of them taking as little as just a week. Others took several weeks. But in that department alone, they have identified at least $75,000 in savings by doing these voluntary furloughs. There are others in the city that have done them. We will have an update once the end of July rolls around. At that point, we'll have an update for all of you to try to give you a better figure overall how much we saved with the furloughs. But today, I had a conversation with the Police Department over another issue, and they presented me with this information, which of course is fantastic. We need to save every dime that we can get, having a deficit now that is well over 3/4 of a million dollars that we're dealing with. So, kudos to everyone in the city who has done their part to take some time off and save the city money. Of course, Chief Stevens and Chief Velatine in both our Safety Service Departments have ensured that they have not let too many people take furloughs at the same time, so that there's not a drastic reduction in coverage for emergency services. But every little bit helps right now with the cuts that we have made here at the city. You all know that we have reduced minimum manning already, so that there are not as many folks on shifts at a time. And we're just getting creative, any ways that we can turn in money, whether it's cutting back on travel and training, overtime, any areas that can be cut back. We have done so in order to try to make this budget balanced, because the last thing we want to be doing is in the middle of a pandemic, laying off our Safety Service Forces, or anyone else in the city for that matter. We already run a skeleton crew in most of these offices, because we're a much smaller city. And, and we just are trying to do anything that we can to avoid any kind of drastic cuts and hopefully get us through the end of this year and the economy rebounds. We're really hoping for that, that V-shaped economic recovery that you keep hearing about. And we're really hopeful that it's not more of a U shape or a much long, ongoing recovery to the economy, because we have not faced these sorts of, of holes in the budget, really, in the city's history. If you look through some of the biggest recessions that we have records for here in the community, record years have been a 10% or 11% decrease in revenue. We have really never hit higher amounts than that in a single year, and right now, we are on pace to blow that out of the water. The only reason we're not out worse than what we are at this point is we had a great first quarter of the month before the coronavirus pandemic hit. We had a pretty significant increase in our revenue up until that point. The economy was really firing on all cylinders. The coronavirus pandemic hit, the governor shut down much of the state, as was most of the nation. And because of that, we're in a position now that we're hoping and praying the economy returns pretty quickly, so that we're able to continue to pay staff and not have to incur any kind of significant layoffs. So, just big kudos to City Administrator, the Finance Office, and all of the department heads and their staff members, who are just getting creative and coming up with any and all ideas, from very normal to even, we've, we've told them, if it's crazy and off the wall, we're more than happy to have that suggested. And at the end of the day, we're implementing all the changes that possibly can be made and that are feasible to reduce expenses here with the city to ensure that we're able to stay liquid throughout the end of the year. So, good news and bad news with that. With that, we did receive $366,000 of CARES Act funding. That was money from the federal stimulus package. Unfortunately, the $366,000, it's not, it's not a supplement to take over for our revenue. You cannot take that and say, "Well, we're just putting that into our general fund to ensure that we can continue to maintain staffing." So, those expenses from the CARES Act funding have to be directly related to COVID-19 expenses. So, of course, we are, we are applying that as liberally as we can, because if we don't use the money, we have to return it to the federal government. And knowing that we're facing a deficit of right now, $822,000, and not knowing if that is going to get any better or only worse from here, we are really trying to use that in all ways possible. So, we will have updates with council to let you all know exactly how we are spending those dollars. But tonight, we need council to pass the ordinance, accepting that money and creating the fund, so that we can then draw from that fund to ensure that we're able to spend the, the resources. That will, of course, go a long way towards helping us at least plug the, the large deficit that we're facing, but it's not going to go nearly far enough. There is talk, Congress will be back in session on July 20 of this year, or of this month. And both parties agree that there is need for a fourth stimulus package. The problem is, they're on opposite sides of the river as far as what they believe should be in that and as a part of that. So, we are basically operating like we are not going to receive any additional stimulus money. We hope that cities and counties will be included in the next round of stimulus, because we really were left out of that. You had all sorts of private businesses that were bailed out by the government and previous stimulus packages, but there was no money other than expenses directly related to coronavirus that was included for cities. So, we're really hoping that in this fourth round of stimulus, some revenue does come to municipalities and counties across this country to try to help us through these times. So, we'll continue to keep City Council and the public updated with where things are at with the stimulus money. A couple of other items. The governor and the state of Ohio recently released a new rating system for every county in the state of Ohio for coronavirus. And it's supposed to give the public and local leaders an idea of how that county is doing to combat the spread of the pandemic. We were all disappointed when the governor made the announcement last Thursday, because Seneca County was orange. So, the levels are yellow, being essentially the best, because the best level is to not be a color at all. But every county in, in the entire state of Ohio is some color right now, because of course, there are active cases in every county. So, you have yellow, then orange, red, and purple. If you get to purple, it's essentially a shutdown of everything again, like what we had seen before. So, of course, we don't want to get to purple in Seneca County. We were very disappointed to see Seneca County listed as orange in the system. After, after calling down to the state of Ohio, we found out it was actually an error that was made by their IT department as they entered the data. So, the state system is supposed to self-calculate. However, when the governor rolled the, the ranking system out last Thursday, the self-calculating portion apparently was not incorporated yet, so they had to manually enter every county's data. And the wrong data was entered for, for Seneca County, having us result in orange, basically as a. Seneca County, having us result in orange, basically as a prelude and a warning saying that cases are significantly increasing. However, if it has not been corrected yet, it will be corrected. We are a yellow county. In fact, we are in the top, or depending on how you look at it, the top or the bottom, the best eight counties right now in the state as far as low rates of spread, contamination, and active cases. So Seneca County, City of Tiffin, is doing a tremendous job at combating this, but we must keep it up. We want to stay yellow so that we're not undergoing another shutdown or being forced to have businesses close again. We've got to keep people working. We just need to do what we're doing, be smart about things, washing our hands, et cetera. So Seneca County is a yellow, not an orange, based off of that system. And then along those lines, City Hall did reopen today. All of our buildings are reopened by appointment only for the foreseeable future. We are requiring anyone who enters the building must, upon entering, if they do not have one already, they must put on a mask. We have masks available at the entrances on all of the buildings, as well as hand sanitizer before touching anything. Visitors to the building will be required to place a mask on their face and use hand sanitizer. However, like we mentioned, the buildings are open, so City Hall, the finance offices, et cetera, are now open to the public, but they must call in, schedule appointment, and get on the schedule. But we obviously, we're trying to kind of tiptoe into this. Because of the small operation that we do run at our city buildings, we can't afford to have a few folks come down with it and spread it around because we could essentially lose our entire finance department, which is, you know, a handful of individuals if just one person was to come in there and spread things around. So we're taking every precaution that we are, that we're supposed to here. We are following the governor's regulations and guidelines for office environments. And we are also requiring, of course, anytime that employees come within six feet of another employee or a visitor to the building, that they must also have a mask on their face. So doing our part to limit exposure and the spread here at all municipal buildings. And then some non-coronavirus related topics. We are hiring for the position of an arborist out at the Public Works Department. So if any of you are aware of someone who meets the qualifications, the job description and the application are listed on the City of Tiffin's website. Please check that out if there's anyone that you have to refer to that, or anyone in the public who may be listening that thinks that may suit them. Essentially, what the arborist does is takes care of tree trimming in the community, tree planting, helps with selection of a lot of the trees and flowers and whatnot throughout the community. But check out that description. It's a good position to have, and we need to get that hired since we only have two arborists citywide, and one of our two has recently left the position to take a job somewhere else. So we are down one and still working on some storm cleanup so we can really use that position being filled as soon as possible. So I think I've rattled enough, Mr. President, but if there are any questions or comments from council members, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilman Lepper?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, we, you know, we received $366,000 from the CARES Act. Was that 100% of what we requested for the day cuts?
So the CARES Act, the CARES Act funding, you didn't get to request anything. It was what you were... I've been fighting that for about five minutes now and finally decided to come out. So the CARES Act funding was federal funding that was given first to the states, and then the state gives it to the county, and then the county has to distribute it to local governments based off of their local government fund distribution. So we did not get to make any kind of requests. We did not get to make any kind of, say, we have more than $366,000. Unfortunately, how the state determined the formula was using local government funds, and you get whatever percentage of the CARES Act funding that your county gets, whatever percentage of local government funds you get is how much money you get. However, if all of the money that was presented to Seneca County is not used, we have the right to request any unused funds if we have the need for them back here in the city. We are, I don't want to say certain, but we're very confident that we're going to be able to attribute enough coronavirus-related expenses to use up the entire $366,000. So if there are unused funds returned to Seneca County, we definitely will be requesting those as long as we can show them as a legitimate expense for coronavirus-related expenses. But it has been made clear that it is illegal for us to use it as a revenue replacement. It can only be used to cover expenses related to coronavirus. So we're getting creative. Some states already are saying that any first responder expenses are automatically assumed to be coronavirus-related. There are states already in the United States that are paying their entire state police force or state medical forces out of CARES Act funding, which is, of course, saving state budgets, but it's angering local governments because they're not getting as much money locally. That is one option that we have here with the city that we may attribute at least a portion of fire and rescue runs. Obviously, if we're out fighting a house fire, that's obviously not coronavirus-related. But if we are on an EMS run and that person is complaining chest pains or has the symptoms, it's very easy to attribute those expenses to coronavirus pandemic because our safety forces have to do a lot of extra precautions. It causes a lot of extra time for them, the things that they have to do. So we need, this is our potential only crack at the apple, not knowing if there will truly be a fourth stimulus or not. And if we don't use the money, it goes right back to the state of Ohio. And you better believe the larger cities like Columbus and Cleveland are going to use up every dime, and they're going to want more. And we need to make sure that we can keep every dime of this money that was attributed locally to Tiffin and Seneca County right here. I don't want to give money back to the state or the federal government, knowing that we have folks that are hurting right here in Tiffin and Seneca County.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question for the mayor? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question for the mayor, and I'm going to preference this, saying that 95% of my questions or concerns come from a resident here in the Second Ward, and roughly 5% of them are my own thoughts. And since I'm a member of the Second Ward, I guess I'm free to ask it. The fireworks are scheduled for September the 4th with the rain date of September the 5th, Labor Day weekend. I understand that. Several meetings ago, someone talked about donations. I'm just curious, how are we paying for the fireworks Labor Day weekend? In a general answer, I guess.
Any comments, Mayor?
I thought we've covered this a few times now, but some years we received donations for portions of the fireworks, other years it's general fund money. I have no idea if we've received donations yet this year. I have not looked at that. So it will either be a combination of donations and general fund expenses. It's really the best answer I can give. I think it's the answer we've been giving to the last several meetings now.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Item two, this did come from one of the 95%ers here in the Second Ward. She asked, the governor of Ohio has not made a stand on mandatory mask. So she asked me, was the mayor of Tiffin being Mayor Monz? Was he going to make a declaration to make masks mandatory here in the Tiffin area? That came as a surprise to me. My first answer to her was, I wasn't sure Mayor Monz had a doctor's degree to make that determination, but I told her I would ask at tonight's meeting. So is the mayor making a declaration on mask?
Nothing has been suggested to me by the Health Commissioner, who obviously here in Seneca County is the be-all, end-all on health matters. She hasn't even gotten in touch with me to tell me that we need to do anything mandating masks or anything. So I don't feel like I can make that determination if she's not even telling me we need to do that. I have no medical degree. So until Commissioner Schweitzer says we need to do something like that, or even begins to suggest it, I am not in any place right now to be mandating masks in public spaces here in Tiffin or Seneca County.
Thank you.
Claude Rector, who has the authority in the state of Ohio to initiate whether or not that becomes mandatory, wearing a mask?
Good question. The Department of Health has statutory authority to take action to stop the spread of a virus. And so the various orders that you've received, that you've heard about from the state, have been on that basis. And that is what the governor has used to issue various orders to close down businesses and take other action that he and the director of the Ohio Department of Health have taken over the last several months. For cities, I have not done extensive research on this because we've not, the question hasn't really come up yet from the mayor seeking the advice. However, I started to look at it anticipating that it may come up, and several cities have already declared an order for mandating masks. Some of them have done that by ordinance, so it takes a legislative act, some communities felt. Others have believed that the mayor, under either a civil or emergency authority under the local code, or a public health ordinance under the code, would allow for the mayor to make that without council's authority. Looking at our code, I'm not sure that our code sections are expansive enough to give the mayor the authority to do this. It may take council action. But, Mr. President, I've not done extensive research beyond some preliminary work, just knowing that that could come up. But that's all I guess can give you at this point.
Okay, thank you. I just spent a week in North Carolina, and they're mandated, when you're inside, that you have to wear a mask throughout the state. Virginia is still, you know, it's up to the individual, pretty much, from what I saw in Western Virginia, like Ohio. So it's kind of varies all over the place. Thanks, Claude Rector. Does anybody have a question for the mayor? I have, what, who has the lowest incident of COVID in the state of Ohio, Mayor? You know? Which county?
Probably find out quick. I don't know off the top of my head. We are one of the best. I know we're not the absolute be-all, end-all lowest number, but we are one of the best. If you give me a couple of minutes and talk about something else, I can find out real quick.
Okay. The other thing, I wanted to make a comment. Hopefully, hopefully, no one's going to come back and say, we got to have another shutdown of our economy because, quite frankly, this is me personally, I don't see how we survive if we do that again. So I think that we've gathered enough information here from a healthcare standpoint that we know a lot more about this virus and how to handle it than we did, you know, six months ago. So I think that there's a lot of things that we're moving in a positive direction. I think the absolute last thing that we should tolerate is to have anybody come back and say, we're going to shut things down again. I just, we can't do that. So anyway.
If I can add to that, Mr. President, voluntary use of masks will hopefully prevent any further shutdown. Hopefully, that'll enable us to continue business as usual. So, you know, from what I have heard and researched, wearing masks is an excellent way to prevent the spread. So if anyone in our community can voluntarily use a mask when they're out and about, doing business, doing commerce, and patronizing businesses, that will go a long way, I believe, from creating another situation where we need to shut down businesses.
Well, I know we had a conversation about wearing masks, and you've been proud of me. I wore one all last week every time I was inside, so.
Good for you.
Have you found it yet, Mayor?
Yeah, I'm eyeballing it here at the map. We're clearly in the top probably eight counties in the state. There are a few that are lower, and they're mainly in southeast Ohio, in the sparsely populated counties, kind of closer to the Ohio River and Appalachia area. Megs County, for example, has a total of 12 cases. Morgan County has a total of 11 cases. And then who else do we have down here in this area? Benton County has 22. But outside of that, just looking through really quick on the map, outside of that area, the only one kind of in our neighborhood that's close, Henry County has 30, and Seneca County has 34. Other than that, we are doing much better. You look to our immediate neighbors, Sandusky County, just to our north, almost an identical population, has 136 cases. To our south, Wyandotte County, which is only about half our size, has 59. Crawford County, again, about half, has 135. Huron County, 220. Richland County, 345. Erie County, 244. Wood County, 428. And Hancock County, 79. So our immediate vicinity, we certainly are doing a very good job, only 34 cases here in Seneca County. And I believe we only have two or three that are actually active cases right now, and they're actively sick. You know, the data that you need to look at with a lot of this is not necessarily the amount of new cases. That's not going to give you the most accurate picture because testing is really ramped up. What really needs to be looked at is the amount of current hospitalizations, because it's all factored in off of our capacity at area hospitals, which we are doing great. The last I checked, I believe we only had one currently hospitalized. And the hospitalization rate and the death rate are the two rates that we really need to keep a close eye on. The positive test case is not necessarily indicative of where the pandemic is at in any given area. It's much more worrisome when the hospitalization rate and the morbidity rate begins to go up. Those are the two things you really need to focus on, and we have done great here in Seneca County with an extremely low hospitalization rate. I don't believe there's been any time that there's been more than two people hospitalized here in Seneca County at any given time with this. So we just need to do what we're doing. Encourage folks to wear masks when in public, wash their hands. It's just the smart thing. Or until we begin to develop immunity ourselves.
Thanks. Any other questions for the mayor, comments? Okay. We'll move on. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest. Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the financial figures for the month of June. Total receipts for the month, $7,671,683.82. Total expenses for the month, $7,078,369.12. General fund unencumbered balance is $1,882,722.95. Income tax receipts for June 2020 were $808,898.6. When you compare that to June of 2019, we were down for the month of June, $227,969.36. Overall, we are at a decrease of 9.82%, only because we had such a good January, February, and March. And we received funds from the CARES Act for the coronavirus relief, an amount of $366,622.50, which we would need to create a fund for. And our unexpendanted balance for all funds is $25,457,182.8, which is the same as our bank balances for the time period. And I just wanted to add one more item of clarification. The fireworks is a normal budget line item, so it's always part of our budget. So we do put some money in. we do put some money in for the fireworks every general fund, which we quarterly transfers into the Parks Department to pay for their programs.
Thank you. Any questions for the Finance Director? Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I ask to approve, Kathy, how's the new software going at the Finance Office?
We are pushing forward. There are still some things that aren't quite working the way we'd like them to, but I've got a really great staff, and they are just pushing forward, and we're hoping we're going to eventually get to where we want to be.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a question for Ms. Kaufman. Could you address the Fund 215? I didn't hear that when you were doing that. Again, that's more for the public benefit, if they're tracking it at home? If you could.
Sure. For the month of June, the amount of money that we transferred into Fund 215 for Public Streets was $99,032.86.
Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would so move that we approve the Finance Director's report and bank reconciliation as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilman Leopard.
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Yeah, a motion and a second to accept the finance report. Is there any discussion? Home favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
Yeah, before I begin, Mr. President, I would suggest that you go back and double back with the public hearing for the 2021 tax budget.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to, I'd like to announce the public hearing, City, Tiffin City Council and local public, for consideration of 20, the 2021 tax budget, and also the proposed ordinance 20-72, which is adopting the tax budget for the fiscal year 2021. It also directs the Director of Finance to deliver the budget to the Seneca County Auditor on or before July 20, 2020, declares an emergency. Anyone wishing to address counsel concerning this subject, please to the President of the Council. Do we have anyone signed in, Kathy?
We have no one who's raised their hand to speak.
Anyone from the public who, who wants to address counsel, please raise your hand, so Kathy can recognize you. Still no one?
Still no one.
Okay. Well, seeing that there's no public comment, I will declare this public hearing closed. We'll move on in the agenda to the Law Director, Brent T. Howard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to give counsel and the community an update on the DORA. At your last meeting on June 22, the DORA legislation was passed. The administration gathered the information together to submit to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. That's the next required step, and that was submitted at 7:02 a.m. on June 23 by email. That day, the 23rd, it was evaluated with, by the Division of Liquor Control, and they acknowledged that they had everything they needed from the city to process the, the paperwork with the end result of issuing new permits to the permit holders in the DORA. The new permits have a designation of an outdoor refreshment area. We still are waiting, unfortunately, for those new permits. I think I indicated it to counsel, it takes a couple of weeks. It's been now a full two weeks, or if not more, and we're still waiting. I think with the holiday, there's some people out of the Division of Liquor Control, and they're still processing. So it could be any day that the liquor permit holders in the district will receive those permits, at which time then they can start serving drinks in the DORA cups that they have, and we're all waiting for, for those new permits to be issued. Are there any questions about the process and where we're at with the DORA?
You want it? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is one of those 5%, I was talking about, my own personal knowledge. I looked at the map on the DORA, and I thought the alley between the Joint Justice Center and St. Joe's Church was part of the DORA outline. But as I see the signs erected, that alley is not part of the DORA. Is that correct or not?
You said St. Joe's Church and the Justice Center.
Correct. That north and south alley going all the way. Yes. And I believe the signs are stopping right at the alley, but looking at the red boundary, I thought maybe half of that alley, or all that alley, was in the DORA program, so I'm just confused, I guess. That's easy for me to do.
Yeah, I, I believe in looking at the map again, that the, the alley that goes from, it's not right at Madison, because all of the block going from Jefferson, all of Madison is included in the DORA. But the, the alley that you're referring to, the DORA line goes right down the, and it appears, and I think you said that the, the signs are on the, the west side of that alley, so no part of the alley is included?
I believe it's the, wait a minute. Yeah, correct, the west side. Yes, thank you, sir.
Right, and, and that's, that's, I think, consistent with the map that I'm looking at that was attached to the ordinance. So I believe the signage is correct.
Anything else for Law Director? Thank you. Written Communications.
We have mayor's request for legislation, number 20-33, appointment to the Seneca Metropolitan Housing Authority, Tom Schweitzer, to serve on his term through December 31, 2024. That was a new addition this afternoon, but it's not in the packet.
Okay. This will be referred to the Personnel and Relations Committee.
Then we have Finance Director's request for legislation, number F20-32, to amend 2020 Budget Ordinance 19-84, in order to increase expenses in construction in the Park and Recreation Department budget. It increases $1,500.
Finance Director's request for legislation, F20-32, will be held on file in the Clerk's Office. Legislation has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
That concludes the written communications, Mr. President.
Thank you. We're now under oral communications. Is anyone from the public wishing to address counsel? They do so by signing in, being recognized by Kathy, and directing your comments to the President of City Council. So.
No one is requested to speak.
Do we have anyone, Kathy?
We do not.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to, are there any motions? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions.
There are no resolutions, Mr. President.
Thank you. We're now under ordinances.
Ordinance number 20-67, introduced by Ben Gillig, ordinance amending the 2020 Budget Ordinance 19-84 to decrease expenses in the TAP State Route 18 Grant Fund in order to balance the fund.
This is the third reading of ordinance 20-67. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for counsel passage of ordinance 20-67.
Thank you. We have a motion for passage of ordinance 20-67. Is there a second? Councilman Perry.
Yeah, I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this is the third reading, and I was here for the first reading, I was here for the second reading, but it just dawned on me, I am not totally sure what a TAP State Route 18 Grant Fund is, and I know it's under line item 262.000.4352 for $403,076. I guess before I vote on this, I would like a further explanation on the TAP State Route 18 grant. In language terms.
Senate Administrator? Mayor?
Yeah, that was, so TAP stands for Transportation Alternative Project. And essentially what that was, was all of the street skate work that was completed on, well, what is State Route 18 through Tiffin or Nutt and Market and Perry Street? The, the extra wide sidewalks that were ADA compliant, the decorative street lamps to give off more light, that was the grant that we received to do all of that, that street work on Market and Perry Street, AKA State Route 18. However, any money that we do not use from the grant, we do have to return it to the state of Ohio, and there are expenses that we are not going to use that we do have to return. We don't get to keep the money, unfortunately.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else have any questions, comments? Seeing none, Clerk will call the roll on the passage of ordinance 20-67.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes.
Councilman Gillig.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-67 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 20-70, introduced by Ben Gillig, ordinance amending the 2020 Budget Ordinance 19-84 to make 2020 mid-year budget adjustments to reduce expenses in the general fund.
This is the third reading of ordinance 20-70. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for counsel passage of ordinance 20-70.
Thank you. We have a motion to pass ordinance 20-70. Is there a second? Councilman Leopard.
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank, thank you. We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 20-70. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk will call the vote on the passage.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-70 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 20-72, introduced by Ben Gillig, ordinance adopting the tax budget for fiscal year 2021, attached here to, is a part here of, directing the Director of Finance to deliver the budget to the Seneca County Auditor on or before July 20, 2020, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 20-72. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for counsel passage of ordinance 20-72.
We have a motion to pass ordinance 20-72. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
A second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to be clear, we're declaring an emergency on this because it's due by July the 20th, which is right around the corner.
Correct. Are there any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Clerk will call the vote on the emergency.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-72 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 20-74, introduced by Ben Gillig, ordinance amending the 2020 Budget Ordinance 19-84 by $190, decrease expenses in dues and fees in the Police Department budget.
This is the second reading of ordinance 20-74.
Ordinance number 20-75, introduced by Ben Gillig, ordinance decreasing sewer rates by 10% for all sewer customers, four bills from August 1, 2020 through March 15, 2021, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 20-75. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-75.
We have a motion for the suspension of the three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-75. Is there a second? Councilwoman Boyle.
A second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I keep saying for the public's benefit, and I'm not sure how many of the public is listening in, but the reason we're skipping the third reading and declaring emergency is to get these 10% sewer rate reduction funds back into the business and homeowners' pockets, correct?
Yes, sir. That's exactly it. Any other comments, questions? All right. Seeing none, the Clerk will call the vote on the suspension.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. Now vote on the passage of the ordinance.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance 20-75 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 20-76, introduced by Ben Gillig, ordinance amending 2020 Budget Ordinance 19-84 to increase expenses in the Park and Recreation Department budget by $1,500 because of a donation from the Tiffin City School District.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-76. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-76.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend the three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20-76. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
A second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I keep saying for the public's benefit and for mine, the reason we're skipping the second and third reading and passing emergencies is so we can get these donated funds put to use and not wait for another four to six weeks for it to take place.
Exactly. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, Clerk will call the vote on the suspension.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. Now vote on the passage.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-76 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Then we have ordinance number 20-77, introduced by Bridgette Boyle, enacting Chapter 343 of Tiffin certified ordinances, allowing and regulating golf cart use within the city of Tiffin.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-77.
Ordinance number 20 dash 78, introduced by Ben Gillig, ordinance amending 2020 budget ordinance 19 dash 84 to create Fund 350 CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Fund, and appropriate $366,620.50 for qualifying expenses under the grant and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20 dash 78. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for suspension of council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 20 dash 78.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend and pass ordinance 20 dash 78. Is there a second? Councilman Leopard.
I would second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, the reason we're skipping the second, third reading and emergency is so we can make this line item of 350 and put this $366,000 in change to use.
Yes. Any other comments? Clerk will call the vote on the suspension.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Leopard.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Leopard.
Yes.
Ordinance 20 dash 78 passes with a vote of six to zero.
That concludes the ordinances, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is, is there anything else for the good of the order? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Curiosity question for, by the mayor. I've been trying to attend various restaurants, and I'm a little surprised at the differences in requirements, because, you know, most of them have the barricading up. But two of the ones I've been to probably in the last 10 days, employees aren't wearing masks. Most of them, the waitstaff is wearing masks. There was two of them where nobody's wearing masks. And so I was wondering, is that not a requirement, or it's up to the individual restaurant? Just kind of curious on how that's handled.
To my interpretation of the regulations that were put out by the state of Ohio, employees are required to wear masks. It's not optional. So that is at least how I have interpreted, and I believe everyone else is interpreting regulations. The Ohio Department of Health has put out is the employees must wear a mask. Of course, you can't wear a mask as you're eating, but the employees, the waitstaff, et cetera, have to be wearing masks.
Definitely were not. One even posted that if you didn't like the fact they didn't have masks on, men.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, Dawn. And to my understanding, the health commissioner was made aware of it, and she's considering, if it's the same one that I'm aware of, she's considering either potentially filing criminal action or yanking their ability to operate as a business. So there are some pretty drastic measures that she can do if places are going to flaunt things like that.
The other one, I was at Friday night, none of the staff, the bar, the restaurant area, nobody, when we were greeted at the door, nobody had a mask on. So like I said, I was just a little surprised. I can understand the kitchen being a little hot to be wearing the mask, but I was a little surprised at the waitstaff. Like I said, kind of curious.
Yeah, you just need cooperation from the businesses, because as you look through the guidelines, and trying to pull them up here quickly, it says, oh, where are they? It's not as easy to hear, restaurants and bars. Yeah. So restaurants and bars, businesses must require all employees to wear facial coverings. There are a couple of exceptions, but they're not, they're not what you're thinking. It's basically exceptions if it's prohibited by law to wear a facial covering, or if there's, I'm trying to look at some of the others. They're not required if the employee is alone in an isolated area. But essentially, yes, if you're a bartender, a waiter or waitress, it is required that they wear a mask based off of this. It is listed in the mandatory section. So I would just highly recommend that these businesses are following that because the health commissioner does have the ability to shut them down, and if they're found in flagrant violation, she even could consult the Seneca County Prosecutor for criminal charges. So I would highly recommend businesses follow at least the mandatory side of the state of Ohio regulations that have been put out. If you're not going to follow the, the, only the suggested portion, that's on you, but I'd suggest that that portion that is mandatory, that you're following it, the last thing that we need here is another shutdown. None of us can afford it, none of us want it. So why businesses are not following those regulations is beyond me.
Councilman Perry.
To my understanding, if somebody has like a medical issue that they don't have to wear the mask, they are also allowed not to, right?
Yeah, I believe so. If it is a documented medical issue.
Yeah. So my only thing about that would be, I mean, to the public, would just be not to assume that everyone has to wear masks too. I get like, if every single person in the bar is not wearing it, probably, you know, I'm guessing not all of them have a medical, you know, excuse not to wear it. But I can imagine for the people that do, it's probably pretty annoying to have to explain themselves time and time again to the public. So, I mean, I guess my whole thing would just, to be not to judge so quickly as well. You know, I'm not talking to you, Dawn, but I'm just saying, for the public in general, would be my advice, I guess, so.
Gossel Gillig.
Just a couple of quick things. I was fortunate enough to go to the Jack and Doze celebration, and it was pretty neat. The first thing that Mr. Valentine said was, you know, one of the reasons why he was in business for 30 years was because of all the great customers in the area. And, you know, that was pretty well his first thought, which I thought was really neat. I also wanted to commend Brett and I, the AT, wrote a really, really good history of Jack and Doze pizza, if you haven't had a chance to check it out. And then if I may switch gears, with regards to the golf cart issue, I would just really like to encourage the public. I know we have some folks watching along on Facebook Live, and Nicole, I know you're logged in as well, if you can maybe make a note of this in the paper. I would just, I would love to hear more from the community, what their thoughts are about golf carts within the city, be they positive or negative. All of our contact information is, is available online. If you just Google Tiffin City Council, it comes right up. Our phone numbers, our emails, and everything else. I would just love to gather some more information.
Thank you. Councilwoman Yanatuno, you had your hand up.
I was just going to clarify, I'm not trying to pick on businesses whatsoever. Like I said, I'm trying to support them and go out to eat. I was just more curious because I thought it was odd, I mean, several of them are all masked up. When I, when I was at Friday night, nobody, staff-wise, had one on. So I just kind of curious on what the regulations were. So I'm not trying to call out anybody, I'm not trying to pick on anybody. I just really wanted to know what the regulations were. And so, thank you, Mayor, for telling me that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Perry.
Yeah, just kind of piggyback off what Ben said, you know. Again, I have no idea where, where people in Tiffin lie on the golf cart issue. So, you know, get ahold of us any way you can, let us know what your thoughts are. I'm kind of leaning towards yes, with kind of a, you know, a short lease, kind of like we have on DORA, would be my, my thinking on it. You know, if it just doesn't work, we can always hold away. My other point would be, I need to schedule a law or Personnel and Labor Relations meeting to discuss the police issue with the requirements on being chief, as well as moving up in the department. So Ben and Dawn, I didn't know what your availability is the rest of the, it'd be next week. I'm on vacation all this week, but next Wednesday, are you guys available at all, or?
Ben, you're available?
Joy is a summer vacation for a teacher. I am available.
Okay.
Are you talking the 8th or the 15th?
It'd be next Wednesday, so.
15th.
Yes.
Fine. What time again?
I'm, I am off, I have my kids at home, so, I mean, if we can do a later meeting, it'd be awesome. But I can make any time work for you guys, so.
You can just say.
We can just say 4 o'clock if that works for you guys.
And are we doing Zoom, or what are we doing?
Probably Zoom, I would imagine. That way the public could, you know, come in if they want, or whoever can attend. I would encourage, I would love to have, you know, the chief there and Brett, you know, obviously, just to discuss the reasoning behind the ordinance that was put in place years ago, and then to discuss, you know, obviously to get the chief's input on, you know, his recommendation and stuff like that, pretty crucial. So having him there would be pretty ideal, I guess, too, so.
So you want to make the announcement, Dan?
Yeah. I'd like to make the announcement Wednesday, was it July 15th?
Yeah.
At 4:00 p.m. for a Personnel and Labor Relations meeting to discuss the requirements for police to get promoted, and for the requirements for the chief, and any other business that comes in for the committee.
Very good. Anyone else? I can't, Councilman Jones.
I have two things. One is ending on a lighter note, but the first one on a serious nature, follow up what Councilman Gillig and Perry said. I'm open for comments on the golf carts in the second ward here. I've not gone out and tried to ask any questions, but no one has approached me. I have no idea what the people's second ward are thinking about golf carts, so they need to get ahold of me on that item. And on a lighter note, with DORA, and one of these weeks, 11:00 a.m. is going to come up, I mentioned to one of the local Tiffin Seneca County auctioneers, that he ought to get with the downtown business group and have a first, a first, and the first drink at 11:00 a.m. And if they would do that, I would be willing to bid on that item just for the heck of it. But he quickly said, well, how would you target one business versus the other 17? And I don't think it's going to go any further than that discussion, so. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, seeing none, I declare this meeting adjourned. God bless you all. Keep up the good work, and thanks for being here tonight, especially to you, Councilman Perry.
No problem. I had pretty to join.
Have a good week.
All right. See you, guys.